I don't have a... oh, you do have a chamois.
I do.
Well, I think we got Darnier. Tom Petty?
Yeah.
He died.
Oh, they said he was playing the life.
Oh, and he, uh, they called him. That's like 4:00 or 5:00. We got that dance with Peter. Quiet in here. Anyone chief?
Somebody's angry.
Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if I could, uh, get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. I'll second.
There's a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Um, do we have any resident comments and questions? Um, that's for things that are not on the agenda, so anything other than the street improvement assessment hearing? I think that's what people want to chat about. All right, let's move on to reports. Mr. Meyer, your chiefness, Carver Fire and Rescue. Do you have anything going tomorrow night?
Absolutely. Rain or shine. Yeah, so we got open house tomorrow, uh, five to eight. We're busy getting ready for it today. We'll have, uh, East Union and Carver Elementary up at the elementary school tomorrow morning, doing fire prevention with the third graders. And then we'll continue to get ready for the festivities essentially in the evening. So, uh, that's pretty much been all we've been working on lately for the most part, so, the officer review board's been, uh, been selected by Brent, so they're in the process for the 2018 selection process, so, for the open positions and steamboat days, we didn't have any calls for the fire department, so we've been, it was good.
None? No medicals, no nothing?
No medicals, no nothing. It was quiet, so that's a good thing.
Wasn't there medical Sunday afternoon?
Hmm, well, that's probably, if it wasn't afternoon, I probably don't consider it during steamboat days. Because, so, but that's pretty much all I have. Uh, the Village Christmas, we're kind of set for December 2nd, so be working with the Lions on that. We'll be doing that up at the fire station again, so, that's pretty much all I have. Anything, I haven't had really anything particular for calls, anything good to share? No bad calls lately, so, we haven't got any lightning strikes yet tonight, uh, on houses, so.
Don't jinx yourself.
Yeah. Any other questions for me?
Yeah, chief, where, uh, where are we at for numbers? How many firefighters do we have?
Thirty.
Thirty, and how many do we actually want?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two, so it's kind of a constant state of?
Yeah, thirty-two, or we'd like to start, kind of starting to increase here in the near future, so.
Okay. Anything else?
Well, we'll be recruiting tomorrow night, so we'll have a table set up for that, so.
You might be digging people out tonight.
Yeah.
Get the boat ready.
Hopefully we don't get washouts.
Get the boat ready. All right, chief, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you tomorrow.
All right, let's move on. Uh, Carver County Sheriff's Department, Mr. Lassard, sir, sergeant.
Evening mayor, council members.
Good evening.
In my report, uh, we have new officer working nights. Um, Officer Peterson, he started the week of steamboat days, um, so we're getting him on board. I spent a couple hours with him one day, um, driving through town. Other than that, East, uh, Carver Elementary's opened. Um, I spent the first two weeks, um, working mornings, um, to make sure the crosswalk, um, didn't have any issues. We didn't have any. By the end of the second week, I wasn't really needed. Staff was taking care of it. Um, I still stop in the afternoons and talk with the school personnel if there's any issues. Other than that, our steamboat days was, uh, quiet. Um, just a couple minor incidents. No one got arrested, no citations.
Nobody got arrested?
Nope.
Nice.
So.
More mellowing.
So any questions for me?
I have a question for you. Um, sorry.
Nope.
Um, we had talked and, uh, I've seen, and we talked about a concerted effort on people running stop signs, speeding through downtown, and I've seen you have a number of people pull over. How's the response been to that?
From the people I pull over?
Yes. Well, and I'm, I am curious, because we haven't been pulling over for rolling through stop signs, and now we are, and I just want to know what the response might be.
You know, most of them understand what they did, um, and they understand now that we have them on video camera. Uh, most of them are residents from the area, um, or know that there's a sign there. Um, and I've been focusing, um, Forest Street and Ash, Third and Oak during the construction or the detour, um, a little bit on, like, Cover Bluff Park, um, or some of the main areas with the stop sign issues. Um, but we try to spread it out. Every once in a while, I'll see stop signs or sections I get concerned about, so I'll stay at those. So we're still working on that, and then our night officer's doing that as well.
Can you keep up on that, sir?
I was gonna ask, are most of those coming out as mornings or tickets?
It's about fifty-fifty. Um, we're kind of looking at, some people are completely ignoring the stop signs, and those are obviously getting tickets, and some people are beyond the stop sign or the stop line in the road. It all depends, so we're using our discretion.
Well, we appreciate the effort. Anybody else have anything for, uh, Deputy Lassard?
Larry, you did a great job during steamboat days. I know you put in a lot of extra hours, and we really appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
That's your job. You know you're appreciated. All right.
All right, well, thank you.
Thanks, Deputy Lassard, sir. Olness, comprehensive plan update.
Thank you.
I know your name's not Olness.
Thank you, mayor and council. So, just to recap a little bit...
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
To recap a bit of where you've been recently, so I, the last time that we met as a group with the planning commission, you had, had the focused conversation, and we looked at and developed your seven planning principles, which are sense of community pride, embrace the river, planning for access to Carver Commerce, homes for all, connected by trails, innovative infrastructure and planning, and long-term financial stewardship. And I read those off mostly for the benefit of the public. This did go out in a utility insert in August. Since then, we've been developing, um, different sections of your plan to start bringing those pieces to you, to start looking at, and in your packet is a full revised updated schedule of what we think, um, is the most realistic for completion of your plan at this time. It's a little bit fluid. Um, some of the items that we're hoping to accomplish is, of course, comparing to your neighboring communities, Victoria and Chaska, and taking another look back at that future land use map. Um, all of you had requested that at some previous meetings, and we are ahead of where they are in terms of schedule, so we are hoping to do that in December. But for your next couple of meetings, what we are intending to do is do that deeper dive into those planning principles and review the draft land use and housing element at your October meeting, and then at your December meeting, review the draft community background element and economic development, economic competitiveness element. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Will we continue to be having those comprehensive plan meetings with the planning commission?
Yes.
They will continue to be joint, and the public is welcome at those meetings?
Absolutely.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for, uh, Cindy? All right, we are now moving on. Thank you, Cindy. Uh, moving on to public hearing, six point one, two thousand seventeen improvement assessment hearing. Mr. Boyham.
Thank you, mayor and council.
I need to open the public meeting right away?
No.
That's what, we wait until your presentation is done, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, um...
That's what my sheet says.
So tonight, yeah, we, we have the assessment hearing for the two thousand seventeen street improvement project, and the agenda that we're gonna follow is right here. So I'll start with the presentation as the mayor mentioned. I'll give an update on the project, talk about the special benefit analysis, um, and look at the assessment roll, interest rate, and terms of assessment. And then we'll turn it back over to the council, where they'll motion to open the public hearing, and that's when the public will come up to this area and give their name and address for the record, and give any comments they, they want the council to be aware of on the project. Once that is done, the council will close the public hearing and, and then have some discussions and deliberations on the issue. If, if everyone's okay with the assessment roll as presented in the packet, you can approve, um, by a motion, resolution one forty-three seventeen. So I'll start on the presentation first. So this update we got from the contractor last week, so every week we, on Wednesdays, we have a construction weekly meeting, and then at the end of the week, we provide a weekly update that gets posted by city staff. But the, um, this week, the schedule is to work on the retaining walls and trees on Broadway. I think right now, there's a variety of different block that is sitting, um, on the east side of Broadway up by, um, the Fifth Street area. They're also gonna complete manhole adjustments at Jorgensen and Third and Ash and Fourth. They'll continue working on the grading, um, for, some final grading work prior to curb and gutter on Third, Hickory, Ash, and Jorgensen. The alley to the west of Ash has still not been graded, so they'll work on that this week, and their schedule as of last week was October 5th to start the curb and gutter placement. This is a picture right here of the Fifth Street area that looks a lot better than that right now. The week of October 9th, so the following week, they'll start on the concrete sidewalk. Um, sidewalk will be placed on Third Street and then Ash and Jorgensen. Um, the substantial completion date for the project and the contractor's November twenty-second, two thousand seventeen. Um, curb and gutter, walk, and the first lift of asphalt needs to be done on all the project streets by that date. Um, the final completion date is June twenty-ninth, two thousand eighteen, and usually that's just giving the contractor time to put the second lift of asphalt on and any final restoration. And I know, um, from the discussions last week as well as, um, previous weeks, we've been, um, and, and we know the council has been hearing from a variety of different property owners, especially in the area of Third Street that kind of was opened up first, and then all of a sudden, the contractor went to Broadway and got that kind of to a certain stage before steamboat days, but we know, um, the continued openness of that area, that the curb and gutter isn't done, the asphalt is a concern, and so we keep expressing that to the contractor. We know that we don't want to have a big rush to get things done all by November twenty-second, and you can see, we just had a discussion, discussion last week with staff about how October, which is considered, I think, one of the beautiful months of the year from a standpoint of colors, but is starting out with a lot of rain, and we, we have seen that in the past in October, and that's where we'll keep working with the contractor. I think there are some, um, pictures that we saw before the meeting of some areas that they definitely have to revisit with some, especially with the amount of rain we're getting right now, so. That being said, that's the project update. Special benefit analysis, this is something the city's been doing for the last several projects. I mean, a very long time, um, that Larry, as a city attorney, and I have been working with Patch and Messner, who does this, and the city hires that appraiser. In the, in the past, you've kind of done it maybe after the feasibility and before the final assessment. On this project, they, they, they did the work at the same time as the feasibility study, so those costs were presented at the, um, public hearing at that time. And the findings of that study is that residential parcels have an eight thousand dollars per parcel for the street improvements, and, and this project has been different than your last projects. We didn't have paving of alleys in the last projects, but this one had that, and so the appraiser looked at, at that information, and they have a twelve hundred dollar per parcel for alley improvements. And I think the last two projects, your two thousand fourteen, or excuse me, your Fourth Street project, which was done in two thousand thirteen, your Oak and, and Fifth and Sixth Street project, the two thousand fifteen project, had that same cost per parcel for the street improvements. Commercial properties, um, they, they did some analysis in the special benefit study that kind of came up with a amount for the various commercial properties, and those have all been incorporated into the assessment roll. And we can, during the public question and answer, we can come back to any of these slides as necessary. So the assessment roll, interest rate, and term of assessment, um, I think there's a handout if, if property owners didn't pick one up when they came. Each one is, is sent a notice that gives their actual assessment, but the, the role is sitting at the front desk in the entry area. Interest rate is four point eight three five percent. Um, term is twenty years. Um, once again, property owners, if they want, can pay within thirty days after adoption of the assessment with no interest. After that period of time, they still can pay by the end of the year, but there is a slight amount of interest that's charged. At the end of the year, any people who have paid up their assessment, then city staff will contact the county and let them know of, of those people who have paid, and if you haven't paid up, they'll show up on your property tax statements in, that you get in, is it April or May? We get them early in the, in the spring when we get those statements.
April.
And, and that's kind of the main part of my presentation. Now we have this slide that we can use for, um, the next part, where you can open up the public hearing, have questions as people come forward again, and I'll turn it over to the mayor and council.
All right. Um, so at this point, let's, uh, entertain a motion to open the public hearing. Um, before we go there, I just want to make sure that we state that those wishing to address the city council, um, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Um, after all the comments are received, the public hearing will be closed, and no further comments on that issue will be received at this meeting, so, um, if I can entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Now, there's a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
You were with it. All right, um, so, moving forward with the public hearing, we have, um, information in front of us with Dan's. Do we have, Dan, can you go back one slide?
Sure.
Um, assessment roll, see handout. I don't know that I have a handout. I don't know that I have that, 'cause, um, I downloaded...
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three? Oh, it's that way. All right. Just want to make sure I have it. I downloaded mine at my house, and... Ah, thanks, Dan.
Hey, Dan. Never mind, never mind.
You need one too, Glennie?
I'll use this.
Oh, I have one right there. All right, just want to make sure that those are available, and, uh, now we have the public hearing open. I sense people would like to chat. Come on up.
Dan, can I have one of those paper ones if there's one left?
Here, can I have mine?
Yep. It's just easier to read it all at once.
Entree.
Hi, my name is Carol Hanson, two twenty-one West Third Street. I do want to say thanks to the city staff for working with me with the contractor's insurance problem that we had with my vehicle. It took about a month and a half, but we finally got it resolved, and I really appreciate that. And just to continue on with part of this assessment, I know we're being assessed for the parking area. I'm still not happy with what we're gonna be doing. They were, they're talking about putting in the greenery spot instead of doing the asphalt. Um, so basically, we're gonna be parking under a pine tree, which has a lot of sap in the spring and throughout the year. Um, my mom just broke her hip, so this is gonna be another concern with getting her out to the car when she does come home, because if there's gonna be an additional curbing, I mean, right now, it's flat, she can get out there. So this is gonna have another impact on kind of a disability handicap person. So if you guys are gonna be putting in grass and then a curbing, and for us to park out on the street to get her in and out of a car, that's gonna be a major impact for transportation purposes. So I'm hoping you guys can work with us to possibly have like a place where we can park. I mean, right now, the asphalt's there along the sidewalk. I've been parking out on the, where it's dug up with the curbing. It's muddy. Yes, I can work with that right now. If you look at Broad Street and Main Street, like in front of Lipinski's house and Tammy's house, they have a place where it's kind of cut in and they can park, so I don't understand why we can't do that on our hill. I understand grass, it is cheaper than asphalt, so I don't know if that's playing into the factor of why they want a greenery up there versus how we have it now.
I have a question. I know exactly what you're talking about. Uh, so, is there going to be sidewalk on that side of the street going towards Main Street?
There will be sidewalk on the west side of Ash going toward...
So the answer's no, 'cause that's the east side. So, so why aren't they just getting their parking pad back?
Yeah, I think when, um, I think it was a situation similar to what we had on Sixth Street, where there is like some parking being done outside of, or behind the curb or off the, the bituminous, and, and we know there's been a history that, you know, that area was at one time a, a church or something and had some parking off the street, and so we are widening the street, um, to be able to allow parking on one side, so that's, and we had some of those discussions with the property owner. We felt we're also on her, on the driveway itself, that we could widen the entrance, you know, of the driveway to allow for some parking, because as you mentioned, there isn't sidewalk there, so it's not that you can't...
No, and that's, that house sits pretty much on the street.
Well, the sidewalk is there now, and I, I mean, I still don't understand if the sidewalk's going, they dug out from Third Street down to basically the tree. The rest of the sidewalk is still there, so we don't know what they're doing out there.
Yeah, and we can, we can meet in the field again, you know, once the curb and gutter gets down, then the contractor will start on the sidewalk work and the grading behind the curb, so we can work through that, but yes, the, the intent of the design was to put curb and gutter in there, and that existing bituminous that's parking, um, you know, outside of the street, but within the city right of way, the, the intent was to take that away and not have parking within the right of way, but off the street, except that driveways.
Which is right under the pine tree.
Oh, they let you keep the pine tree?
Right.
Yeah, it's a single lane driveway, isn't it?
Yes.
So widening the driveway's not gonna help?
Well, I think, no, we, there was some thought that actually widening the driveway, especially, you know, because I think there's a retaining wall or some type of wall that starts up as you get further into the, the single lane driveway, but making the entrance wider, that, that was my recollection, guys from...
Oh, two cars could park at the end of the driveway?
Yes, to make it wide enough to allow that.
That work? No. 'Cause it's right under the pine tree.
Oh, yeah, the pine tree.
And if the city puts the grass in there, are they gonna maintain it since it's city property?
No, you have to maintain the right of way.
Just questioning it.
I mean, you don't have to, but we'd like you to.
So, yeah, so we've, you, we've had some meetings and discussions on it. I think we can certainly look at it again, um, with the property owner and kind of measure out that entrance, but yeah, the intent was to try to get everyone parking in driveways or parking on the street, um, and not...
How come Main and Broadway have parking out on the street?
So, yeah, Main and Broadway has parking out on the street.
Well, like in front of Lipinski's house and like my grandmother's house on Main Street, that's where I was parking when it was muddy. They have a little pole in the ear off of the street.
Yeah, it's kind of a bump out park.
Sure, the bump outs.
Right.
Right.
I don't think Ash Street's wide enough to do bump outs.
No.
So if the pine tree wasn't there, could you feel comfortable parking there?
Well, then we're gonna lose all our shade.
Well, Carol, you, Carol, you gotta make a decision. What do you want here? Shade or... I don't know what to say, because I don't understand how they can do what you're asking for.
I don't know why it all has to be grass out there. I mean, can't it come in partway where the sidewalk is and put grass? I mean, I don't...
Can you explore that and see?
Yeah, we can look...
I mean, I, I don't understand where the city street is, and then we, it's a city street's out there now, there's this layer of asphalt still there, the sidewalk, so why can't we take part of the sidewalk and still pull in where we are?
Yeah, so we can, we can meet out there and, and look at it, and, and see if there's something. Sometimes when Brian and I get our heads going, we can come up with something, but we thought, you know, we had come up with that wider driveway, that that would be a, a solution because of the number of cars that I think park in the area now, and that would help with additional parking, so, but we'll look at it again, and then, um, we can give, you know, they haven't placed the sidewalk yet or did the work behind the curb, and we can give everyone an update after we look at it again.
Also, if you're gonna be pulling in, the driveway's going this way. So if you're gonna have two spots there, we're gonna be parking, so now you're gonna have to be walking out on the street, and like with my mom again, it's gonna be an issue.
Does that make sense, Dan?
Yeah. Well, can you work with them and then let us know what you think?
Yes, I'm kind of in and out right now with her being in the hospital and transitional care and all this, so...
Okay.
It's gonna be spotty. We can try.
You guys have Ms. Hanson's number?
Yes, we have email and, and...
Yes.
Phone numbers and...
Right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Wish your mom the best.
Anyone else? Come on. Tommy?
Thank you, Mr. Detail. I said, "Thank you, Mr. Detail." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Detail. I don't even have mine yet.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tommy.
Tom Detail, Dogon Township. Dave and I, we own three properties in town here, all which are assessed, and I am here, uh, I want to deal with that parking lot. If you look at your, uh, your zoning, your, the zoning doesn't, that's residential, and now you're gonna put a commercial parking lot in there. The city isn't in compliance there. You're in violation of your own, your own zoning ordinance. And if you're gonna change the zoning, you're gonna have to say, follow the same protocol as anybody else does. And these people are saying how we're creating value here, well, that really doesn't create any value for us when we got more traffic and, uh, a nuisance of a parking lot next to our properties there. So, uh, uh, you're not creating any value, as you people say. You're devaluing the property. And now we got more traffic in the alley, basically we got a street on both sides of the house. And as far as the paving goes there, uh, first of all, you haven't got a profile in there that's gonna stand up. you haven't got a profile in there that's going to stand up for that alley if you're going to run that parking lot through there. One and a half inches of blacktop, it's, it's an alley. It's not going to, you're going to run more traffic through it. When the paving is shot, are you going to hit us with another assessment there?
I think we'll, we'll have three and a half inches of asphalt on the alley.
Well, you were an inch and a half before. What, did you just decide to change that right now?
Nope, that's been the plan from the, that the contractor bid on from the beginning.
That's got to be seen yet. Well, we don't want a street on both sides of our houses there. What are you going to do?
Me?
Yeah, as a council, that's why I'm asking you guys.
Larry, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, go right ahead.
Larry, when you're looking at this ordinance, um, can you address, oh, you didn't receive one? Okay.
So is it, Mayor and Council, as it relates to the ordinance, which the city sent some correspondence to Mr. D. Tom. The, the property where the parking lot is on is located in a traditional residential zoning district, which allows city-owned essential services, and so a parking lot would fall under that piece.
But it doesn't say anything about a parking lot in there. If you can read that, you are in violation.
All right, so, hold on one second here. So this essential service and what we have listed as essential services, we don't have parking lots on here. So is that in compliance or is it not in compliance with our own ordinance to put a parking lot on this lot?
What are you reading from?
In the top part of the, do you have any more of this, Tom?
Yes, I do.
My opinion is a municipal parking lot would qualify as an essential service.
Well, then it should say so. I don't believe you're right. I think you're playing the game as you want to see it. If this ordinance is stated in here, it doesn't say a parking lot in there. You guys can sit there and say, "Now, we're going to put a parking lot in there," it's all fine and good, but this ordinance, you're in violation of that ordinance.
I think the section we're referring to is essential services, governmentally owned and operated essential services, sewer, water, public streets, civil defense sirens, et cetera. And so Mr. D. Tom is correct, it doesn't specifically say that, but the et cetera relates to those pre, predetermined uses.
When, when we went through this process, the, the decision-making process on, A, we all agreed, except for Christie, that we needed more parking in downtown.
Well, you destroyed forty places in town already with your magical plan.
Okay, so then moving forward, when we went and actually voted on this, we talked with our city attorney, we talked with our, excuse me, our city planner.
How can you guys be in viol, nobody else could do that. If anybody in the private sector do it, you would, you'd have to go through the same protoc, we'd have to go through a protocol changing the zoning.
We don't need to change the zoning, Tom.
Yes, you do. If you look at this paper here, it does not say parking lot in there. And you people can read that. You should be able to.
Well, it's a matter of interpretation. Our attorney is one...
You're interpreting it the way you want to interpret it, not the way it reads here.
Okay, I, I mean, I don't want to argue about the, the language that we're trying to determine and what we're actually making decisions based on. I mean, I respect what you're saying, but I also respect the fact that we have an attorney and that we take their word for it. And going through this process, following the process that we need to follow to make that a parking lot, we did that.
Well, then you should have rezoned it. You should have followed the protocol and rezoned that property.
And that's, I mean, I...
You didn't do it. You did not.
I appreciate your opinion, and, and the, the fact is, is that we followed the opinion of our attorney that said that we didn't need to actually follow that process. And had we, had he said that, yes, we need to follow that process, we would have followed that.
Well, then he's wrong.
Okay, then, I mean, you have alternatives. You have ways that you can try to rectify that. And if we need to go to court, we'll go to court, but we have to follow what our attorney says. He understood what we were trying to accomplish by that parking lot.
Right, yeah, why, why put an ordinance in place if you're not going to follow it? Tell me that.
We are, we are following it.
We're not.
Okay.
Definitely not following that ordinance.
I'll just disagree with you. We are following it.
Well, you're not the first guy I disagreed with in my life.
I know. And I'm not, this isn't the first time that you and I have disagreed.
No.
Probably won't be the last, but I'm just saying that on this particular one, when you're stating to us, "What are we going to do?", the answer is nothing, because we followed the process that we've been told to follow. Does that make sense?
No, it does not.
Do you have anything else you'd like to talk about, Tom?
Well, it's just, uh, I don't, I can't, uh, I can't believe you guys are ad-wind to this ordinance. If I, if I was trying to do something like this, you'd hold me to the fire.
Probably, but I mean, we would also help you walk through the process if we agreed with what you're doing.
Well, you can walk through all the processes you want, but if you're not following the vibe, following the ordinance, what's good, you might as well walk around the rain out here.
Okay, we're, I mean, we're kind of arguing at a point after what we're trying to make, and that we think...
Well, we brought this up before.
Yep.
And it, uh, it's talking to you people that don't get very far.
I don't, I don't know what, Tom, we disagree. But we're following the advice of our attorney. You're saying our attorney is wrong.
Yes, I am.
Okay, you have avenues to try to prove that. I, I'm not, I'm not saying that you're wrong. I'm just saying that we have to follow our attorney, and that's what we're doing.
Well, that's what we'll have to do then.
All right.
And we're paying assessments for you to use our alley. Does that make sense?
Your alley?
Your alley?
It's a public alley.
We're paying for that, so you can use that alley to exit that parking lot. We, if you're going to put that parking lot in there, we shouldn't get assessed for that alley paving.
I don't think I follow that.
Why not?
I don't, if I don't follow it, I can't tell you why I don't follow it.
You're going to use that alley to exit here, right?
Pardon?
You're going to exit through that alley, buying our property.
That's an option, yes.
Yeah, okay, now you're going to run the, run that traffic through there, so we're paying for the paving, so you can run your traffic through there.
It's an option.
Huh?
I, well, I believe it's the only option that we looked at, is to run it that way.
It's a public alley. Anybody can drive on it.
If you're going to do that, we should not be paying an assessment for that asphalt, for the paving in the drive, in the alleys. Because it's for your benefit as a city.
It's for your benefit as well.
You're benefiting more.
We're paying more.
But we are qualifying this...
Why should we pay the blunt of it? So you can exit your alley and run your traffic through there.
Are you saying we should be considering that a street?
Pardon?
Are you saying we should be considering that a street?
Well, it's going to be like a street there.
Because I think the assessment would be higher.
Well, the assessment's eight thousand on the front and it's twelve thousand for the alley.
Because it's a street versus an alley.
So there's, there's forty-eight hundred dollars for the alley assessments there for four of us. So, and if you're going to use that alley to exit your parking lot, you should be picking up the freight on the paving.
I don't know that I agree with that argument.
Huh? You don't believe that?
I said, "I don't agree with that argument."
We should pay for the alley so you, so the city can use it?
It's not the city, it's the community that's going to be using it.
The city, yes. Okay, the community, city, and, right.
It'll be driving on that alley still.
Pay the assessments so the city and the community can use our, the alley that we're paying to use or paying to pave, right?
I just, I wasn't sure if your argument is that it's a street, because if it's a street, your assessment would have been higher.
Street, we're paying eight thousand dollars for.
Assessment, yes.
We're paying twelve hundred apiece for the alley pavement. And when, we were in here before, and we opted that we didn't even need that. We would keep the gravel.
My point is, is that your, your argument is that it should be considered a street versus an alley, the assessment would be higher.
Lady, I know that. I can read this paper.
Okay, then I guess we're done.
I'm saying that you're going to be using our alley that we're paying for the paving on.
So the way I see it, Tommy, is that because we are doing something as in this, under this essential service, that we are now creating a use because it is in a residential area before. So I, I do understand where you're coming from when you're saying that, that alley and what you're paying for is now to support an essential service, that essential service, as it's written, that we have now added that was not there prior.
Right.
So I don't know what the, I don't know how to work with this. I didn't vote for this parking lot, so I very much feel where you're coming from on this. And I do think the essential services is a little vague. Again, we have the city attorney who has his opinion on it, but what, what resolve are you asking from us?
Well, I don't think we should be paying the assessments on the alley then.
Mayor and Council, if I can just add, the, I understand the point, but the alley ingress and egress is no different than Third Street. The property owners, albeit it's a lot of money, are paying a portion of it. The city is actually assessing right now, and not that anyone should feel happy about this, but the actual minimum amount that we can in order to fund the project by state law, we can only assess, we have to assess twenty percent of the project costs to property owners. We're like a razor-thin, just above that twenty percent. And so the community is going to use Third Street, and I recognize that Mr. D. Tom and others are paying for a part of that Third Street, but the community or city is paying eighty percent of that, and the same holds true for the alleyway as...
That's forty-eight hundred dollars in the alley, and you're saying that's only twenty percent of it?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Come on now.
For grading and blacktop, correct.
You guys, you're shuffling a lot of those, a lot of your other infrastructure off on us. All right, so that would be four more times, that'd be, well, let's say five thousand we're paying there, so we've got another twenty-five thousand to do that alley. Or three inches of the blacktop and, and four inches of the base.
That's eight inches of class five.
It's, well, okay, eight inches, but still, that's quite, quite a chunk of money for that project.
And the, and the common borrow, and, yeah, so it's, I mean, in, in general, I...
There's no common borrow there. You just subcut it.
Right.
There's no borrow there.
Well, we can...
You would borrow, let me haul the dirt from one place to next.
Yeah.
Well, that's, I don't want to argue the whole entire project, but I think just when it comes to the assessment, Tom, I think when you're, when you brought this up, I think we have a, an agree-to-disagree on the language of the easement, or, excuse me, of the, uh, essential services. And I think moving forward in terms of cost of the project, um, I don't know that you have an avenue to contest that. We've, we've taken twenty percent, and we've made that the least that we can give.
Yeah, your twenty percent, it's, it's more like fifty.
Well, we'll, we'll provide you with the bills that we pay. We have to do that. I mean, that's part of the legal process, so...
Um, there is...
I knew this meeting would be a cut-and-dry deal here. We didn't gain any ground here.
Well, I, I, please, go ahead.
Does anybody want to explain what the appeals process is?
Yes, the appeal process is very simple. Anybody that wants to appeal the assessment, the notice clearly tells them they have to provide a written notice of an appeal tonight to either the city clerk or the presiding officer, uh, which would be the mayor. And there's no specific format. And then within thirty days thereafter, they have to commence an action in the district court to challenge the assessment.
Well, that's probably what we got to do. Talk with the rest of the people in that alley.
All right, Tom. All right, anyone else? Want sense? Didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Well, now that Tom's got it, everybody all riled up.
Got us all worked up.
It'll, my presentation will be calm. Um, I handed this out, um, and we just, it's the 212 project or the 212 building on Main Street that we're talking about. We live on 221 West Fourth Street. But we just feel that the thirteen thousand three hundred is an excessive, um, assessment because of the fact that you already have easements on it and the property. We can't do anything with it. So I tried to explain it, um, because it is a little bit more complicated than, than what we thought. We gave the, um, prescriptive easement way back when the floodwaters were rising, and we thought we were doing the right thing, um, to help save the city and the residents. But it seems that now it's coming back to, to bite us because in doing that, we lowered the value. And then when you did the two thousand and sixteen, um, whatever it was called, two thousand and sixteen that Wilson did, we were paid only ten percent of what you thought the value of the land was. And again, we were not really given any choice. It was like, well, you did this then, so now this is what follows. There's nothing that you can do. So the, of the, of the footage that we have, fifty-two feet, fifty-two feet, and the only amount that we have left is twenty-five and a half feet. Everything else on Third Street is, is the, under city easement. And if we're being charged for twenty-five and a half feet, thirteen thousand three hundred dollars, we think that's excessive.
So I don't mean to interrupt you, Barb, but, um, Dan, when these numbers are coming up, the fifty, the fifty, the twenty-five and a half, or, sorry, fifty-two, fifty-two, twenty-five and a half, um, do these resonate? They working up there?
Yeah, so the, you know, when, when the city used to kind of follow a formula, we'd kind of have a combination parcel, front foot kind of formula that was used for collecting assessments. But when, uh, through the special benefit analysis that is done by the appraiser, they, they don't look at if you have fifty-two feet or twenty-five feet or seventy-five feet. They look at a parcel, and, you know, if you're accessing Third Street to serve that parcel, that's kind of their, um, lay of the land. So, you know, a corner lot is, is the same assessment as a lot that's not a corner lot, so it's not based on front footage in their analysis. So that's why, um, you know, our formulas that we've run over the years and when we used to run it at forty percent assessment, um, you would come up with such a high number, and then the special benefit kind of said, "Well, you know, this is the actual value based on their professional opinion." So we've kind of been following that on all the projects and don't look at the twenty-five versus fifty-two foot.
Is it, uh, considered commercial property or residential property?
Um, I believe it's commercial, but I'd have to look at the special benefit analysis.
No, the report shows it as mixed use.
A mixed use, okay.
The report shows it as both.
According to the easement that Wilson did to, to pay us, uh, when we gave you the original, um, easement, it was considered residential. And so if we're, if, if it's residential and we'd be paying what everybody else is, then it would be an eight thousand assessment, not a thirteen thousand three hundred. You know, if that's your, if that's your formula. But it doesn't, doesn't look like that's your form...
We got paid as a, as a residential property rather than a commercial property, so the city really set the example on what it is. It's resident. And Wilson says right in there that it's, uh, Lot One is, our building sits strictly on Lot One. It doesn't encroach on Lot Two. And Lot Two, they say, and Wilson says it's residential, and Lot Three is residential.
And we already paid for the Broadway...
I mean, we paid a lot of money, so...
When that street was done. So we just feel that, that perhaps it was looked at incorrectly, that you looked at it like it is a commercial property, and it's not.
And I, and I apologize if I didn't have it in front of me, and I think, Larry, you'd said it's mixed use, so, um...
Well, here, when, when Wilson did this, they say it's zoned two different classifications. The north portion along Broadway Street is zoned central business district. And the back portion along Third Street and the levee is zoned traditional residential district. So they set precedent on it, and they paid us minimal amount at that point in time. So how can they now flip-flop and make us pay a higher fee by saying it's commercial?
I don't mean to interrupt, but, um, and I, this is the first I've seen of this document. It says the highest and best use. It says the subject's highest and best use is its current use as a commercial business.
On the building, but when, but when they're subject before acquisition and after acquisition, they're saying that the building is commercial, but the, the other, the Third Street is residential.
Lot Two and Three are residential.
Just like the lot across the street that you're taking from Tom, that's residential. Ours matches up perfectly on the, on the map. Ours matches up perfectly on the map with that, so ours would be residential as well.
So should the Swansons go ahead and file an appeal, or can we work together with them to look at it, or what?
The city has an appraisal that supports the assessment. You are, and as was made pretty clear when the project came before you this spring, you're assessing 20 point, you're 4 1/100ths. You've got less than $1,000 over the project cost in terms of cushion, so the practical reality is the assessments are so skinny, in order to meet the statutory requirement for the bonds, you really don't have any room to adjust assessments. And if they file an appeal, and something gets worked on in appeal, that's different, but by statute, you've got to assess at least 20% of the project cost, so...
So let me just, because I know where you're, I know what you're going to say. Let me rephrase that. I think I know what you're going to say. So we have a statutory right, because this is what we need to process the bonds that we're using to pay for this particular project. We stated that the assessment was 20%, 20.0004, okay? Legally has to be 20%. Right, wrong, or indifferent on this particular parcel, because we set the appraisal rate, or excuse me, the assessment rate at 20%, we're covered. If it's the wrong assessment, we can process that through an appeals process that will not count against the 20% if we adjust it.
Well, the council by statute, in order to sell the bonds, has to assess at least 20% of the project cost.
And we've done that.
Well, you haven't done that yet. If you adopt the resolution tonight, you have effectively done that. You've satisfied the statutory obligation. If an appeal comes later, and appeals come after assessments very frequently.
Okay, but my point being...
Afterwards, you've still satisfied the statutory requirement.
That's my point, and that's, so even if we decide that the right thing to do is to say not $13,300, it's to say $11,200, whatever the number might be, because I'm not going to get into a number, because I don't understand all of this right now without taking a look at it, but if we end up going back underneath that 20%, but because we've set it statutorily, we're covered.
If a different amount is determined in an assessment appeal, I think you're covered because the council has fulfilled the obligation under 429091. You've assessed at least 20% of the estimated project cost.
So we still have the ability to go back, once we set the assessment hearing, we have the ability to go back under appeal and potentially change the number if we need to.
No, they would have to appeal.
They would have to appeal.
That's, right, I understand that, but, so in essence, it's, it's words. We can still make it right.
This is a notice of an appeal. This is our notice of appeal.
Yeah, so they are appealing.
Oh, yes, Barb's, what Barb's provided is clearly a notice, I'm sorry, what Ms. Swanson has provided is clearly a notice of appeal effective under the statute, but you still have to file a district court appeal within 30 days from tonight's meeting to perfect your appeal. It's a two-step process.
Can arbitrarily change something in...
No.
If we lower yours right this second, and what Larry is saying is if we lower it right now, which we may or may not think it's right, okay? Let's just say that we think it's right, for hypothetical purposes, and we lower it to 8,000, say, we are now not meeting the 20% assessment statutory that we need, that we legally need to do to sell the 429 bonds. We are following the advice of an appraiser that went through this.
Even though it is assessed as commercial and it's residential, and one whole lot is in the crick, which is absolutely worthless, no.
To us, as users...
And I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm not disagreeing with you.
I mean, before the dike was there, the lot was probably 60% usable.
And I, again, I'm not disagreeing with you.
What I can tell the council in that regard is because the Swanson parcel is, has some unique features. The appraiser very specifically looked at that particular parcel and made specific findings in relation to that parcel that supports the assessment. It isn't like, okay, all residential parcels get this. The appraiser specifically looked at 212 Broadway. I'm not saying that that should, may or may not influence things in the future, but I do think it's important for the council to know that the appraiser recognized the uniqueness of the Swanson parcel in making that determination.
Well, if they paid us $2,000 for the easement, and now we're being charged $13,300 to virtually pay for the frontage on the road that we have nothing to say about, as they say in there, you cannot touch a blade of grass in it. That seems not right.
You can't touch a blade of grass on the dike?
Because there's an easement, because there's an easement on it, that when Wilson took the...
We can't move dirt, we can't plant anything, we can't do anything on it.
On the berm?
An easement you can use, but with the berm, you can't, what can you do? You can't cut it. The city cuts the top, I always cut it the side, and that, now they're cutting the side. I mean, it's unusable. But I just, my concern is that on one piece of paper, it says it's residential, and now we get into this problem, and now it's turned into commercial property.
And they're both benefiting, both sides are benefiting the city rather than the property owner.
Realistically, we got, for Lot 2, we got a 25-foot driveway and room for four cars on Lot 1. I mean, that's worth $13,000? I don't think so. I mean, it's, and then we got a 52 by 76-foot lot on Lot 3 that is protecting the city. The whole lot is in the dike. I mean, there's nothing, it crosses the crick 20 feet on Third Street, and it's in the top of the dike on the other side, so it's, you know...
Had we known we were going to be penalized for giving the city something that we thought was the right thing to do, would we have done it? Would any of them done it? How were the other properties along Main Street or Broadway Street treated? Are they residential? Are they commercial? There is no commercial property on Third Street that we own. It's a parking lot, it's a driveway, it's a crick. It's not usable to us.
And a bunch of red rock and a high dike.
I have a question. The 13, excuse me, the 13-3 that is assessed to their property, is that split out at all between the three, or was it just one lump that they did when they surveyed through for the assessment?
The appraiser aggregated the parcels to come up with that value. I'm not aware of whether they did individual parcel analysis or not, but the value is for the entirety.
So he's using it as a commercial base?
No, the appraisal's work, appraiser's work product says it's mixed use and analyzes it separately, but it doesn't, hang on. Hold on me a moment, I'll get back to the right page. It has, it appears it's two-unit residential and one unit for insurance purposes on this appraisal report.
But that's not on, that's not on those lots, Larry.
Larry, can you repeat that? I didn't hear what you had said.
It looks, according to the, according to what the appraiser shows, and I'm looking at the appraisal report, it shows that there's insurance and then two-unit residential.
Yeah, on Lot 1.
On Lot 1.
Only on Lot 1.
Lot 2 and 3 are residential.
I mean, they're two, they're two separate lots. They're both, they're, you know, they're plotted out on the city. I mean, we get charged for Lot 2, which is a residential, and Lot 3 is a residential lot, and we got a total of 87 feet, but the 52 and the 37, 15 feet of a lot, 2 Harveys has got a building on it, so there's, and the other lots that are on residential, 75 feet, they're paying 8,000, we're paying 13,000 for 87 feet. So it's a little ridiculous, I think, how they figured that.
When it's on a corner, you pay less on the frontage because you have to pay the side. Well, we already paid on Broadway to the tune of over 20 grand for the parcel that touches Broadway. This property does not touch, the commercial part does not touch this Third Street. I don't understand why that's so hard to understand and to separate that value.
The building sits on Lot 1 in its entirety, so, I mean, you can't even build anything, you can't use it for anything. We got a 52 by 76-foot lot that's protected.
I see what you're saying.
You've got to pay this much money on it.
No, I see what you're saying. I see, I...
And I understand what you're saying, too, and that's why I think you, I'm glad you're appealing, because I don't think we could sit here tonight and come up with a different number for you.
No, I don't think you can either, but for us to have to appeal to district court and then pay another, what, $3,000 in attorney's fees to get this resolved?
You don't need an attorney.
Yeah.
It's a small client's court.
No, it's not.
No, you don't. Don't you need an attorney to file at district court?
Yeah, so we're going to have to hire an attorney.
Larry, can you explain what that process is, once they get to the court process? They file, is there a fee for filing?
I'm sorry, yes, there's, the district court charges a filing fee to file the appeal.
Does it vary, or do we know what it might be?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay.
Couple hundred dollars.
Okay, and then, oh, sorry. And then, you would need representation if you were going to go into a court like that. You would suggest that people are represented for themselves.
Yes, it's a, perfecting an assessment appeal is a technical process, and you need, you want to make sure you do it correctly.
So they could end up spending the amount they're trying to save on the attorney to appeal?
I don't know. You're asking me to speculate.
But that still doesn't make it right.
No.
No, I don't think so either. The appraisal that was done, can they get a copy of that?
Yes.
Okay. Could you please send, have somebody send that?
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Barb.
I can't see.
What are we missing?
Nothing.
All right.
Basically, they get this as commercial.
You guys can't be talking. So, just so that I understand, we are at 20.0004. No, go ahead.
You want to call for additional comments? Otherwise, you might want to consider closing the public hearing if you don't have any additional comments from the public.
Sure. Do we have any other comments from the public? Come on up.
Hi, I'm Ms. Rob.
Mrs. Rob.
How are you? Our concern is, I understand not wanting to put the second coat of pavement down, but in front of our building, there's a lip, and we've had several people trip on it. Just kind of putting it out there. I'm not sure how safe it is for our few customers and contractors that come into our building.
So what we could do, and I can talk with public services, sometimes there's, I mean, if there's an entranceway that everyone's using, they can put a small, like a batuminous ramp on, so that it's almost like a ramp, and then we mill that off before we put on the next lip.
It's just a safety issue, you know, I don't want any of our customers...
Those electricians are used to going up and over stuff.
Actually, steamboat days, a very elderly lady almost face-planted it if her companion would have caught her, and that was the light bulb that went off that, you know, I trip on it all the time, but that's, you know, that's that.
All right.
And did something change at, from the original drawing at the end of our 421 building, the alley? It really seems awkward for cars to park there. You know, there's a bump out, and the sidewalk came out further than what we were anticipating. I know it's besides the point now because it's all poured, and it's not all the way finished, but it's a little awkward looking for our, for looking, and then for Chuck who rents from us downstairs to park.
Yeah, I'm thinking at that area where Chuck parked...
We've talked to Chuck a few times. Don't always get a word in.
I think that layout is matching what the plans have it as, where there is that one stall between the two driveways at your southerly building, but, right, the rest of it, there was a bump out at Fifth Street West, so there's a bump out on the west side, kind of this longer bump out on the east side that then ties into that big entrance between your two buildings, so I think that's been that way since, you know, the final plans have been prepared.
Maybe we just didn't look at it or assume it was going to be quite so big, so, okay, that's it.
Thanks, Mrs. Rob. I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. All right, now we can discuss and deliberate. Feel better? Proper procedure. So, we have an issue that the assessor came up, excuse me, the appraiser came up with a number. We go through the process, we're at the process of appeal, assessment hearing, and may or may not have, what I'm hearing is, is that we are at 20.0004. So in essence, and I, this is just clarification, so you kind of a yes or an no. In essence, if we're at this stage of the game, then we see something that may or may not need to be rectified or done, we now take into consideration affecting the legalities of the bond that we sold and that we are in the process of.
Correct.
So what we're being asked to do is to essentially take into consideration the improvement, the approving of the bond at 20.0004, and placing the onus on a resident to either prove or disprove and pay their way to come up with a number, since we can't really, we don't have the wiggle room.
That's accurate, but realize that the city acted in a prudent manner here. You're not assessing based on a policy.
Well, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not asking to justify our assessment. I mean, we've gone through the process. I'm not, I'm not trying to belittle the process in the least bit. The appraiser went out, we paid them, they put due process into this particular parcel, but we're at that point now where this has to be essentially legal from their standpoint or legal from our standpoint when it comes to the 429 bonds.
I mean, the practical reality is, in order to support the bonds, you've got virtually no wiggle room on the assessment.
Yeah, we have none. It's like 500 bucks. Does anyone have anything else they'd like to add?
I do. So if we were to say that a certain one is out of line for what they are being assessed, and it goes below that, then what happens?
We don't have any money.
You mean if you attempted to reduce the assessment tonight?
If we reduced, if we reduced anyone's assessment, and it went below that, what repercussions, what happens?
Well, by statute, you've already sold the bonds, so you basically had the affirmative commitment that you're going to assess at least 20% of the project, and so if you do it, you're violating the statute. I mean... if you do it, you're violating the statute. I mean, these are questions that are far better addressed to Mary Iple, your bond counsel, but...
We're in trouble.
Yes. I mean, you just, you really don't want to do that. Lots of bad things that happen to cities' credit rating, and cities, could affect the city's ability to sell bonds in the future. I mean, you've got a statutory obligation to assess twenty percent of the project cost. I mean, the statute says unless you hold a general election on the bonds, you have to assess at least twenty percent of the cost.
So you couldn't just adjust the other assessments?
I mean, if you wanted to increase the other assessments to stay at twenty percent, you could do it, but recognize that, let's get into another whole aspect of 429.
How about the city of Carver assessment?
Can I, which question do you want me to answer?
I want you to answer my question.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
The city has to meet the special benefits test, which is that you've got to show that there's a benefit to the property that's commensurate with the amount of the assessment. You've got an assessment rule that effectively mirrors your appraisal. I don't know where the data is to raise the assessments on other parcels.
Because we can't necessarily prove that we approve their property by that said five hundred dollars more, whatever the number is.
The issue is, is that may be creating another wrong to create a perceived wrong on this. I, as your counsel, am not going to acknowledge that this is a wrong because you have an appraisal that supports it. I understand the council's position on this particular parcel, though, certainly.
Now, do you have a question?
No.
We, actually, we've closed the public hearing, so I apologize. We can't take anymore. No, that's not what I said. I appreciate that, though. So this process question. We approve, what we need to approve tonight for the 429 bond. The appeal process says that it has to go to District Court, or is there mediation that could potentially occur?
As part, as part of an assessment appeal, an assessment appeal is a District Court proceeding. Under the rules of general practice for District Court in Minnesota, the case will get diverted to mediation before it ever goes to trial.
So what you're saying is that it has to go to District Court, and the odds are is that it would go to mediation, so...
It would absolutely be mediated before it ever went to trial.
Okay, so here's my question. Why, does it legally have to go to District Court, or can we enter into mediation with the homeowner on our own?
In order to perfect, an appeal of an assessment is a two-part process by statute. It's serving a notice on the city, which was done tonight, and then filing the District Court appeal within thirty days thereafter.
Okay.
So there's no appeal unless they file the District Court proceeding.
Got it. I got you.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, can we take a five-minute recess? We want to kind of go over some concepts that might help us resolve the situation for the Swansons here tonight.
I am all for that. So let's, we don't need a motion for that.
I'll make a motion and take a five-minute break.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second for a five-minute break. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let's get back here at eight seventeen, eight eighteen.
Thank you, Mayor Colton.
Now we can talk again, and I'm not getting chastised.
Unfortunately, there's nothing that we could come up with that would put us in a position where we could meet the statutory requirements, so I have to ultimately defer to the city attorney's judgment on this.
And the city attorney's judgment is?
Well, I don't...
We can't go underneath twenty, and we have to force them to go to the appeal process?
We have to assess at least twenty percent of the project, and you just don't have any room. The project was skinny from day one, and there was a fair amount of work that was done in the beginning about what was included in the project to make sure that you could assess, to drop the project cost to make sure you could assess and that it matched with what the appraisal report was, showed. That was all done when you do, when the original feasibility study was presented to the council in, I don't know, Dan, March?
I totally understand, and I, I think before we do, there's got to be a better process. And what I mean by that, that in order to potentially save three thousand dollars or four thousand dollars, whatever it is, to have to now follow the appeals process, to go have to spend that money to go to try to save that money, I just, I feel like there's got to be a better process, and I apologize that this is where we're at. I understand the need to be as close as we can. This is unfortunate to ask a resident to have to do this. It's just my personal opinion. I understand that we need to follow the 429 bonding, and I get that part of it. Maybe we, moving forward, build in some leeway, but I, I don't know how to do that. This is one of the most unfortunate processes I've run into in my tenure, to tell somebody that in order to potentially save money, I'm not saying that they're, I'm not saying that the appeal is right. That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that there is what seems to be a good point to an appeal. Whether that's proper or not, I don't know the answer to that. I just find it very unfortunate that somebody's got to spend money about the same amount that they could potentially save in order to try to do it. Anyone else? I apologize, Swansons.
Sorry, Barb.
So, what I've heard is that we don't have a lot of leeway. Oh, we don't have any. Just out of curiosity, my last question. The public hearing is closed, so discuss and deliberate here. What happens if we, if we table? It says motion to table or to approve.
Well, if you table, you've already closed the public hearing, so the public hearing portion is done. Nothing's going to get accomplished by, I mean, nothing would change between now and a meeting two weeks from now.
Except I'd have time to actually go through this completely.
Yeah, it doesn't...
But our hands are completely tied. Our hands are completely tied. We've tied our own hands on this.
We tied our own hands on it. I think that's a really good way to put it.
Yeah, yeah. That's exactly it.
Guess I'd entertain, well, I'll make the motion. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 14317 that adopts the assessment rule for the 2017 street improvement project.
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
This sucked.
Well, I mean, that's a pretty broad statement. It's an unfortunate situation that I think that if we...
Very unfortunate, the way that that...
Well, I, I agree. I agree, but I, you know, I don't know that...
We still have a process we have to follow as well. We just cut ourselves skinny.
We what?
Cut ourselves skinny is what he said.
Well, we did that, we did that with great intentions.
Yes.
Because if we don't, we potentially are assessing somebody more than what their property is valued, and we also potentially run the risk of a number of things, but, and I don't, we trusted our appraiser, we trusted our process. I just, it's hard for me to believe that at the end of the day, if somebody wants to appeal, and now we're making them pay money that they don't necessarily need to pay. Ms. Monroe?
I have a question about when this, when these proposed assessments went to the property owners. Was that how long ago? About a month ago, a week ago?
Well, for this public hearing, it was at least two, it was a ten, we have to do ten days' notice, so...
Oh, okay. Because, I mean, one thing that Mrs. Swanson said that I kind of thought, yeah, that's not so good, is that she didn't get it soon enough so that, you know, she could have gone and investigated herself with, you know, before coming here, where we can't give her any answers, basically. So I don't know if we can somehow, I mean, the law says ten days probably, but maybe in the future, we could try to get the assessment rolls out sooner.
Sure.
We've known these assessment rolls how long prior to releasing them?
The assessment rolls were out in March.
Yeah, we, we made those public. I mean, this isn't the first people are hearing of it.
And I, I don't, I'm not trying to invoke that somehow we should, the city or the council should feel good about this process, but I, I can tell you that there are cities out there that don't do a special benefit analysis, and they'll assess property owners for forty percent of the project cost. That's their policy. And so, in a Carver's instance, we do the special benefit analysis, which brings us down to the minimum. And so by being at the minimum, you have less wiggle room as far as a strategy goes to reduce. The alternative policy direction is to say that we're not going to do a special benefit analysis, that you assess at forty percent, and then instead of getting an eight thousand dollar assessment, people are getting notices for a twenty thousand dollar assessment. And that's what the practice was for several years, and only recently, probably within the last two or three projects, we've done the special benefit analysis. And I can think to the project that we did on the east side of downtown with, was Fifth Street, Sixth Street East in Oak. Their original assessments, I remember we met with one of the property owners, I think it was Dan and I, you know, she was a single mother. She had an assessment for like twenty-five thousand dollars. And obviously, she was very, very concerned. We met with her and said, we're going to go through this special benefit analysis, and you'll probably land in the eight thousand to eighty-five hundred dollar range. And she was satisfied with that. We had a different strategy this time, and I'll take the blame for that piece, as we said. I don't, I didn't want to put out that twenty-five thousand dollar assessment notice to these folks. I said, let's start with a special benefit analysis number, and that's the number that we're going to put in. Still a lot of money, but it removed that, the perception that it was being lowered kind of artificially because they weren't getting the high number first, and then we were dropping it. We started with the best number, so there, we kind of, by doing that, lost all our room to kind of essentially negotiate, if you will, maybe a poor term, but since we did the special benefit analysis early, set that number early, that's the minimum amount that we could do. It creates, unfortunately, situations that we're in this evening.
I just think the process sucks, that's all.
And I think, I want to remind the council about one other aspect of this particular project. Staff and Dan in particular worked very hard backwards. We got the report and knew what the benefit level would be under the report, but then you've got to back into the project cost and make sure the project fits. The project numbers were originally higher. You wouldn't be here tonight because the project wouldn't have been built, because you have to assess at least twenty percent.
That's, that's all great.
So one of the things Dan had to do was to try and drop and figure out what the cost was.
I love that part of it, and that's all great. And that's, that's, but if you look at the perspective, and perspective is reality, I totally understand what you're saying, and I can't agree with either one of you anymore. We still lost tonight. Okay, so, I mean, it's, we, we have a better process from when we first got, when Cindy and I first started, and you're telling people they owe thirty grand. It stinks. That's why Dan earns his big money and gets yelled at. But at the end of the day, this perspective tonight, this process, we lost. And we're doing what we can, and it's the right thing, but when you follow the letter of the law, when you follow, and we all understand what's going on, when the optics are up here, and we've got to go out in the community, we, we lost tonight, so. Go ahead.
So, these are the same numbers that we saw back in March. The residents, the taxpayers, did they, they only receive this notice in the mail ten days ago? I know that it was available publicly, but did they have to proactively see it before ten days ago?
Yeah, it should have been mailed out, I thought, in early September, but, yeah, I'd have to check.
Yeah, but either way, the process doesn't change. They can't take a look at it and come up with all the numbers, and then they still have to wait until this meeting to come in and file an appeal.
Correct. This is a meeting to...
So, I mean, it doesn't, that, whether they had it in March, but I understand what you're saying.
No, I'm just curious procedurally. That's where my question's coming from.
And I know some property owners, after that presentation in March, did ask for some of this information that the city staff sent them on the special benefit analysis. So it was something that staff tried to get that out when they asked.
All right. Any further discussion? Any questions, comments? There is a motion, there is a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving forward to item number seven, the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay. Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have no unfinished business. We have no new business. City Council Communications, Monroe?
Do you have anything?
Johnson?
I don't have anything.
Mock?
I have nothing.
Hank?
I got nothing.
Mr. Mayor?
I have nothing.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. I will second that.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. What's that?